All right, now I'm going to move the recommended action of number one and eight on the consent calendar. For minutes for the special meeting held on April 26, 2018. His bare motion for that.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
I second.
With the excuse absence of Commissioner Nguyen, do we add that to that?
Yes.
Okay. All those moved by Commissioner Schaefer, seconded by Commissioner Rush. Sorry, I'm so sorry. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, make the vote show that. And with the absence of Commissioner Nguyen and Commissioner Tara at this time. Next is the communication disclosure for questions. Any Commissioner have any disclosures?
I do.
Commissioner Rush?
So on Sunday afternoon, Commissioner Hiddardell and Christie and myself visited all the homes and had the fortunate opportunity to meet all the homeowners. My other disclosure is I will be abstaining from item number four, the Delgado's property, because I've had a lot of communication with them, showed them my application, answered a lot of questions and talked to the city.
Okay, thank you so much. Now I'm going to go back to public comments for non-agendaized items, and we have one from Dale. Please pronounce your name for me. Thank you.
It's Dale Helvig, H-E-L-V-I-G. I'm here just to give you a pictorial of some of the stuff that's going on in North San Ana. The makeup of North San Ana is changing drastically or could change drastically over the next three to five years or whatever if all these projects go in. One of the projects that was just added, and there'll be a Sunshine Meeting on it, Main Place Transformation Project, which will add millions of square feet of business, office space, and also nineteen hundred more apartments, which will bring North San Ana up to close to four thousand apartments that are going in in this period of time. As you know, we're opposed to the 2525 project, which is the only project in all of these apartment developments that are being built next to single-family homes. At the last meeting, you guys had an item on the agenda to talk about 2525. It's my understanding there's no legal reason why you guys can't continue that process, and I recommend that you go ahead and look at that, talk to legal counsel, whatever, but I'd like to see that item put back on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helvig. Is there anyone else who wish to address the commission on non-agendaized item? If not, we're going to move forward, okay? Now we will come in and move to the business calendar. So at this time and place is the public hearing on item number one for Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2017-50, Historic Register Categorization 2017-49, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement Number 2017-54 for the property located out of Leventon, West Sixteenth Street. The staff will now make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Case Planner Ivan Flores will give an overview. If you recall, this was the item that was continued to allow for an opportunity to add additional information into the report, so Ivan will highlight some of those points.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Before I begin the presentation on my item tonight, I'd like to provide a quick overview of the categorizations we'll be seeing tonight. The properties we'll be looking at today fall into two categories, contributive and key. To be eligible as contributive of building, building, structure, object, or site must contribute to the overall character and history of a neighborhood or district and be a good example of period architecture. To be eligible as key, a building, structure, or site has to have a distinctive architectural style and quality, be characteristic of a significant period in the history of the city, or be associated with a significant person or event in the city. I'll be presenting on 1110 West Sixteenth Street, which was continued from the April 26th meeting due to information regarding, missing information regarding the original homeowners, and the current homeowners are listed on the historic property form. Further research showed John Constantine Frank lived there along with his spouse Madge I. Frank for more than forty years. Mr. Frank was a chemical engineer by trade and a partner of Thin Line Manufacturing, a furniture company. Ms. Frank was a local artist who has two pieces of art residing in the Bowers Museum private collection. The current owner Carol Frank is the daughter of Mr. and Ms. Frank, and she took over ownership in 2000 according to the city directory. She was the first female non-clerical purchasing employee at Interstate Electronics. Mr. Holstein was constructed the house using the design of Cliff May, the pioneer of the California Ranch House. In 1955, more than eight out of ten tract homes in the U.S. were designed with Cliff May as a lead designer and Chris Cho as the architect, who was one of Cliff May's collaborators. Mr. Holstein was the primary builder of Cliff May Homes in Orange County. The Frank House is one of ten intact homes in the cul-de-sac that retain the original features of the Cliff May Ranch House. Based on subsequent research, we recommend that the Frank House be categorized as key because the building has a distinctive architectural style representing the ranch house style in San Ana. That will conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Ivan.
Thank you.
Any Commissions have any comments or questions of our staff? I just want to thank you for the additional information on this call. I know that Carol Santos brought to you a lot of information, and it's important that we do document as much to show how historic and prominent, especially with the key recommendation that this house is. So thank you for including all of that additional information in your report.
Thank you for your patience.
And at this time, I'd like the applicants to come up and if they would like to speak.
First of all, you've probably heard enough from me from the last meeting, but I just want to thank you for all your hard work for keeping architect, houses not being torn down and redone and kept, you know, the love of architect, which both of us have. You want to say anything or just going to stand there and look at me?
I'm going to stand and look at you.
Okay. Thank you, thanks again. That's all we have to say.
And thank you for all your hard work in assembling the information to be included in our Historic Resource.
Well, obviously, it's a passion, and we're just thrilled to death to have this done. It's been like visiting old friends, but it's like visiting my parents. It was wonderful. Thanks again.
Thank you. Madam Secretary Teller, have we received any written communications?
We have not.
Okay. At this time, public hearing is now open. If anyone in the audience would like to speak on this particular item, it's your chance to come up. Okay, if not, then I declare the public hearing closed. Okay, and I'm going to bring it back to the Commissions for consideration.
I just want to say what an honor it is to have some Cliff May Homes in our community. He's quite well-known across Southern California or all of California, and most of the homes on your cul-de-sac unfortunately are not as pristine as yours. They've been modernized over the years, so I'm thrilled to see one of them at least preserved, and congratulations.
Motion?
I would like to make the motion.
Commissioner Murashi?
That we adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission Application Number 2017-50 and approving Historic Register Categorization Number 2017-49. I also recommend that the City Council authorize the City Manager and the Clerk of the Council to execute a Historic Property Preservation Agreement Number 2017-54 with Santo Puzo Jr. and Carol H. Frank, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the City Manager and City Attorney.
Is there a second?
Second?
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Rushi, seconded by Commissioner Rush. All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries six to two in the absence of Commissioner Nguyen and Commissioner Tara. Congratulations, everyone. Moving on. This is the time and place for public hearing on item number two for the Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2017-54, Historic Register Categorization 2017-53, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement Number 2017-58 for the property located at 1815 North Heliotrope. And, oh my gosh!
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Item number two is being called the Amling House, and it's located on 1815 North Heliotrope within the Floral Park neighborhood. The property is a two-story, single-family residence representative of the art-modern, variant of the modern style. It was built in 1937 by prominent local builder and developer Allison Honer. It is recommended that the property be listed on the register and categorized as key for its exemplification of the distinguishing characteristics of the art-modern style and for its association with developer and local builder Allison Honer. The massing of the structure suggests a cubic form which reflects the influence of the emerging international style of architecture. Asymmetrical and designed, Amling House exhibits a low-pitched hip roof with single gable on hip and little to no eve overhangs. It displays a strong horizontal emphasis and minimal yet distinct ornamentation. The first-story exterior exhibits a white stucco, excuse me, a white smooth stucco finish with minimal architectural detailing, including scalloped fascia and curved walls that flank the recessed entry and radial entry overhang. The house also incorporates a series of speedline slash double-hung wood windows of varying sizes along each elevation. Lastly, the property is landscaped with several young trees, low vegetation, and simple walkway at the front setback with a contemporary fountain. According to city directories, the first known residents were Ernst C. Amling and Lydia C. Amling. Along with his brothers Ernst Amling owned and operated wholesale flower nursery business called Amling Brothers, which was relocated from Chicago to San Ana in 1921. Ernst operated its greenhouses from a 10.5-acre property located on West Fifth Street. The Amling roses grown in San Ana were shipped to all parts of California, Mexico, Texas, Arizona, and Utah. Along with Tom Wright, Ernst is recognized as one of the many pioneers who, excuse me, one of the many pioneers and founding members of the organization that would be ultimately known as the original Los Angeles Flower Market, which was founded in 1919. In 1933, Ernst Amling and his brother Albert Amling were the first Californians to apply for a rose patent and were granted a patent for the red talisman rose. Given the distinguishing characteristics of the art-modern style, its contribution to Floral Park, and the fact that it's associated with Allison Honer, staff recommends the approval of listing of the property as key. Staff also recommends that the city enter into Mills Act agreement with the owner. That concludes staff's recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any of the Commissioners have any questions or comments?
No.
At this time, okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Would the applicants, I see Randy and Maria here.
Hello. Great, how are you?
Do you want to speak?
We, as we discussed on Sunday, you know, we purchased the house to preserve exactly what it chose and love the history of it and just want to continue it, including planting the red roses.
You were telling us also that Floral Park, as we know it today, was, had roses all over the place.
Right.
Yes.
My goodness, can you imagine the fragrance of that entire area?
Yes.
That's magnificent. How did you come to San Ana?
I grew up in San Ana. This was a pristine neighborhood that we only dreamed of ever owning a home in, so this is a dream come true for me. So this home, especially on Heliotrope, for us means that we can preserve some of that beauty that I grew up admiring, so this is our dream.
You folks recently purchased the property, right?
Yes.
Correct, in October.
It was a physician, I think, that owned it.
I'm sorry?
He was a dentist.
Wasn't it a retired physician that owned it?
A dentist.
Yeah, he was in the process of retiring, selling his practice, yes.
Yeah. His son-in-law and daughter owned the Little Sparrow.
Yes, in the café.
Everybody in the neighborhood, we first saw our house as the Little Sparrow House. I didn't know why until I was at a book club meeting, and they're like, oh, this is why.
Well, we also, when we first thought it, we thought it was because if you remember the big tree, if you knew the property, and it had, when they listed it, the realtor told them it had been dead for five years, so we did plant, you can see in this picture, we've planted a similar replica back in, but yeah, we thought that it was because the sparrows were coming into the tree. We didn't know.
We love our neighborhood and love all the uniqueness of every home that's in there, so we're definitely going to preserve that history there.
Since you're into preservation, I've lived in the neighborhood for over thirty years. There used to be two trees in front of the house, one where the fountain is.
Oh.
And the one on the corner that died, and so I was glad that you at least put one of them back.
Yeah, we didn't know the history on the fountain.
That was a newer addition by the previous owner.
Yeah, that's an interesting fountain.
Yeah, from what we saw on records, we'd be the fourth owners, or we are the fourth owners.
They have light in that fountain, and when they turn it on, it's a magnificent visual effect with that fountain, out the window of light and the fountain itself, the structure of it just happens.
And those windows that were mentioned are probably one of our favorite features of that house. They're the old-fashioned with the pulleys and stuff, so definitely keeping those. It's, yeah, it's a lot of fun features. We have a basement, a lot of fun stuff.
No speakeasies, right?
No, no.
Speak easy, right?
Yeah. We do have wine in the basement, but that doesn't count, right?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary Teller, have we received any written communications?
We have not.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open, as anyone from the audience would like to speak on this application. If not, I now declare the public hearing now closed. I will bring it back to the Commission for comments or motion.
I'd like to make a couple comments. This is always been, my degrees are in architecture, and this has always been one of my favorite homes in the Floral Park neighborhood. I've known about it for a very long time. My grandmother lived in Washington Square, so even before I moved to Floral Park, I was aware of this house, and it just really stands out. I'm quite honestly shocked that it was never on the registry previously, so thank you for your application.
You've been inside the house, I take it?
I've been inside, and it is stunning inside, as original mahogany doors, has sort of a tray ceiling in the living room, just some really amazing architectural detail inside as well as the outside, and I hope you'll preserve that as well.
The one thing that we noticed and they pointed out, and I thought about it after we left, was that tray ceiling like you're talking about. What they did was they painted the inside of the house white to highlight tray ceilings and also the fireplace and stuff like that, so they are definitely preserving those characteristics.
Sir, any comments? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion.
Okay.
That we adopt a resolution approving the Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2017-54 and approving Historic Register Categorization Number 2017-53, and that we also recommend to the City Council and the City Manager and the Clerk of the Council to execute a Historic Property Preservation Agreement Number 2017-58 with Randy J. and Maria G. Hamilton, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the City Manager and City Attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner? Okay, moved by Commissioners Schaefer, seconded by Commissioner Murashi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries by a vote of six with two, absence of Commissioner Nguyen and Tara. Congratulations. Now is the time and place for the public hearing on item number three for Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2017-52, Historic Register Categorization Number 2017-51, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement Number 2017-56 for the property located at 1615 North Freeman Street. Welcome.
Well, thank you all for having me. Good evening to all the Commissioners. So I'm here on item number three for the nomination of the Boyle House at 1615 North Freeman Street in the Washington Square neighborhood. So what we're looking at here is a one-story, single-family ranch residential building constructed in 1951. The Boyle House qualifies for listing in the San Ana Register of Historical Properties under Criteria One as a representative example with the distinguishing characteristics of the ranch style. So the building has a cross-gabled roof with a moderate pitch. It extends over the driveway to the south of the property, creating a portico share. The exterior features going from left to right along the front elevation include generally stucco-clad exterior along the middle with vertical flush wood cladding, these little dog ears, it's pretty hard to tell there, but little triangle dove ears, sorry, dove coats, and horizontal lapped wood siding and exposed rafter tails with minimal eve exposure. Additional features include a brick chimney, a canted bay with brick water table on the primary elevation. It also includes a double-hung bay window on both sides of a larger central fixed window set within the bay. The porch and portico share are supported with simple square wood posts atop brick piers. The house appears intact to its 1951 date of construction and is in good condition. So the people here, and this is where we get into a nice little bit of local San Ana history, show that it was mostly owned by one family, the Boils. So the original residents were W. Lyle Boyle, listed along with his wife Geraldine Boyle, and they actually met over in San Ana High School. So Mr. Boyle was a member of the football team over there. He was a fullback. Unfortunately, during his senior year, suffered an injury and wasn't able to play the big game, but he was there. He went on to be a civil engineer and an assistant scoutmaster. His family was also quite prominent in the sense that one of his brothers was a vice-president at the First National Bank down here in San Ana, and the other, one of his other brothers also founded Boyle Engineering, which is still around but was sold to another agency. The 1962 directory indicates that Geraldine Boyle had become the head of the household, suggesting that Mr. Boyle had passed between 1960 to 1962, but we still had the family own the home up until it was sold in 2006 to Raymond and Maria Braun, who in turn sold it to its current owner. So given the structure's distinguishing characteristics of the ranch style and its contribution to the historic character of the Washington Square neighborhood, staff recommends approval for listing the property as contributive. Staff also recommends that the city enter into Mills Act agreement with the owner. And now, that concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions about the home.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, Commissioner, have any comments or question of staff, Commissioner Rush?
The windows in the front, those are all, those are all original?
Those are all original, so the windows, as far as we can tell, were the original windows, and we went on site to go take a look at them. We can definitely double-check and verify, but those appear to be the original windows.
What is the, what is the water table feature?
Oh, sorry, the water table feature. So the water table feature is that little item at the bottom of the, that basically keeps water from the base from leaking into the wood, and so it basically protects the foundation a little bit. So in this, we're, let's see, you guys actually can't see a mouse, but right below the bay, there's just all that brick cladding, so that basically just protects the structure from having any kind of water leakage. So you see that both with the wood and with the brick.
We were curious about that.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I was too. Quite honestly, I think we all learn something about architectural history and architecture every time we do one of these, so it was fun.
Any other questions from the Commissioner? Thank you so much.
Of course.
Would the applicant like it? Mr. Whitman, hi.
Hello.
We spoke to your mother.
Oh, yes, it's my eighty-one-year-old mother that lives with me. I was very fortunate to get the house. I was really looking and looking for a house all intact, including inside, which fortunately every tiled surface, all original from '51, a really interesting green bathroom, and the other one's blue, kitchens also with the original tile, outside, all original double-hung windows, and it took me a while to find it because I wanted something completely intact, being antique owner, or antique dealer in orange. That's my passion, old homes, old furnishings, that's what I really enjoy. And I'm still working on the yard. I just put in a rose garden and getting there, takes time.
Any comment from the Commissioner? Okay, which one, Murashi first, or do you want to come around?
I'll defer to my colleague.
Well, I was just going to make a joke that, obviously, you've got that car that we saw parked there to match the house, right?
Yes, the old Perry Mason car, yes, a '66 Lincoln convertible, for sale, by the way. I had my fun with it, yes.
Well, I just wanted to congratulate you. I lived in Washington Square for many years, and I have to tell you, the entire time that I lived in Washington Square, that house was one of the primary objects of our scorn in terms of, it was a screaming wreck.
It was the son of the original owner, the neighbor said, yeah.
That house had fallen into such rack and ruin. I'm shocked to learn that the original tile survives in the bathroom and the kitchen, but it was such a wreck, the ceiling collapsed.
That's what I heard, the tree fell on it.
Oh, it was unbelievable mess, so thank goodness that you, I know it was purchased and refurbished before you bought it, but still good for you.
Resurrected.
My dad, many, many years ago, worked for Boyle Engineering.
Oh, wow. Interesting.
So, for a brief time, but anyway, congratulations to you.
Yeah, thank you.
And we'll have to talk after the meeting about that, about that Lincoln you have.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, there we go.
I have one other comment, that I would just echo what Tim said, that that house for years looked terrible. I would drive down this street to go to visit my grandmother who lived on Louise, and that had to be the worst house on the block, overgrown, neglected, peeling paint, and then I didn't hear a tree had fallen, but I heard that the roof was.
There was a big tree in the front yard, huge tree.
Ceiling was gone in that front bedroom, and so the house obviously has undergone some restoration. Today looks better, I drove by it earlier today, the best I've ever seen it look, so thank you for taking pride in your home.
And I, you're landscaping, and then the little deer just goes by.
Oh, Bambi, yeah, it was from my aunt Sarah Madre, yes.
It just adds to the character of that.
Oh yeah, very tacky 50s, yes.
If we, if we were to approve your request today, would there be like any coupons for discounts on furniture?
Oh yeah, 10% off, come on down, Antique Depot.
Just kidding.
I just wanna say, I got so many calls, and I'm surprised we didn't have any written communications, because I kept referring them before I met, so many calls from people living in Washington Square, Tom Hottson and others, said, "You've gotta approve this house, you know, you've got to approve this house of what it was and now it is today." So you have your whole Neighborhood, Washington Square Neighborhood Association behind your application.
Wow. Flattering.
Like I said, I'm very surprised there's no written communication, but I did have a little.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we've not had any written communication.
We have not.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone wish to speak from the public about this application, please get a call forward. None, the public hearing is closed. I will bring it back to the Commissioners. Do we have a motion? Mr. Rush, Commissioner Rush?
I'll make the motion, if I may. Adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission Application Number 2017-52 and Historic Register Categorization Number 2017-51. Exhibit one, recommend that the City Council authorize the City Manager and the Clerk of the Council to execute the attached Mills Act agreement with Mr. Eric Whitman, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the City Manager and the City Attorney. Exhibit two. What, what did I do? What's that?
Okay, move by Commissioners Chapin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Harvey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, six with, six to two with Commissioner Nguyen and Tara absent. Congratulations. Now is the time and place for the public hearing, number four, item number four for Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2017-65, Historic Register Categorization Number 2017-64, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement 2017-67, with the property located at 2377 North Lyre Street. Staff, I mean Ricardo, I'm sorry, staff will now make their presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The property up for discussion is located at 2377 North Flower Street and is being proposed to be named the A&amp;M Wagner House. The residence was constructed in 1937 in the minimal traditional style. The building is a one-story symmetric, with symmetrical composition and an intermediately pitched roof with little to no eaves. The primary elevation is dominated by a front gabled wing with symmetrical fenestration. A brick chimney is located on north elevation near the front, or primary elevation is visible from the public right of way. The exterior of the building is clad in stucco with horizontal siding adorning the front gabled wing and decorative scallop siding abutting the stucco. At the time of the construction of the building, the listed property owner slash builder was Wesley Farney. Wesley Farney was a contractor, inventor, and member of the San Ana Junior Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Farney's notable construction works in San Ana include the Second Baptist Church located on Second Street and the residence of notable San Ana businessman Dale Deckert located at North Towner Street in the Washington Square neighborhood. While Mr. Farney was the listed owner and builder, no evidence supports him ever residing at this location. The first recorded residents of the home, according to the 1940 city directories, were Arthur and Mabel Wagner. The Wagners were members of the Ebel Club and held numerous bridge games and modern literature readings at the home. The A&amp;M Wagner House qualifies for listing under Criteria One for its representation of the distinguishing characteristics of the minimal traditional style, and additionally, the house qualifies for categorization as contributive because it contributes to the overall character and history of the Floral Park neighborhood and is a good example of period architecture. Based on the analysis provided in the report and in the presentation tonight, staff recommends that the Historic Resource Commission approve historic listing and recommend approval of the Mills Act agreement on the property. That concludes my presentation, I can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ricardo. Does the Commissioners have any comments or questions, Stan? Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, Madam Chair, I believe that we need to fill in the blank where it says category on the executive summary first page. I don't know what everybody else has, but mine has, doesn't have the category. Four dash sixteen, executive summary, front page, there's a non-applicable.
We can make that correction.
You did make it?
We can make that correction.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Sam? Thank you so much. Would the applicant now like to come up and read your application? Mrs. Mark, do you want to have a call order?
I do. Okay, so first of all, I'd like to thank you all for considering my home, and I love this whole practice because I finally got rid of those ugly palm trees in front of my house. So now my house, you can see the windows in the front of the kitchen and everything is beautiful, and he wouldn't let me cut him down before, so. So I want to thank you all for all that, and as far as the history of my home, I mean the architect, he did a lot of community service. He built the, he put a new roof on the, I guess the Boy Scouts, the Boy Scout place in Irvine, I guess there's a big place they have there, and he put a new roof on there. He was a, he was part of the, what is it called, the National Guard, and he helped protect the city of looting in the 1930s.
33 earthquake.
1933 earthquake, and he just did various things like that. He was part of one of the first commissions to start the reboussification of San Ana. He was on the Chamber of Commerce for that. And the Wagners were great because they did a lot of community service with like the Red Cross and held functions at our home for that. And the Bruces lived in our home, I don't know if you're familiar with that family, but they, she is a piano teacher who is widely known in San Ana. I mean, I have a niece who's like 35 years old and she took violin lessons from her when she was this big. So she's very well-known in San Ana, lived on Victoria, our home, and now on Baker Street. She had a little girl there, and that little girl wrote these books, she lived in our home. And she was actually, for Sell Out, this is Sell Out, but she was actually, her books actually were made into films by the BBC. And she helped with the documentary of Pompeii, right?
Yes.
Pompeii.
For Discovery Channel.
For the Discovery Channel, and she lived in my home, so.
Yeah, and actually in our home, we had that big pine tree there, it's like, I don't know, pine tree, and it had a, it actually has a tree swing. We usually put it up now because of the age of the swing, we don't want no one just randomly from the street going on and getting hurt, so we do keep it up, but that swing is still there and she was actually, she used to swing on that.
Yeah, she's.
From what her mother told us, you know, back in the 60s.
There's a lot of history with that, with that tree. Her father told me during an interview, I called him to ask him about my house, and he says, "The house in 1962, I think, when they bought it, or somewhere around then, the house was as big as then, as that then." I mean, the tree, the tree was as big as that then. So, yeah, so anyways, we want to continue the tradition that the former people lived in our home did, with community service. I myself was involved with Girl Scouts for over six to seven years with my daughter being the troop leader. I've advocated for schools for better education in San Ana. I go to my, I go to protest things and things like that, I support and things, so he does other things through music, but you know, we're teaching our children to do the same. My daughters grew up in San Ana, I grew up in San Ana my whole life, and although I have.
And our home is used for a lot of functions.
It is used for a lot of functions, but, I mean, I know I gotta cut it close, cut it short, but I have looked in other places to see if the grass is green or somewhere else. And we drive back home and I just love my neighborhood, I love my neighborhood, there's no other better place than that. He told me when we were teens, "I'm gonna buy you a house here." And I would tell him, "Shut up, you're not gonna do that. You can't do that." And he bought me a house there.
What makes every man successful, you know, a woman right behind him.
So now when we drive down Victoria Street, I say, "Are you gonna buy me a house here?" He learned his lesson. He says, "No." He told me, "No." I said, "Okay, never mind." But I want to thank you again for your consideration and especially for coming, taking the time to come to my house and see it firsthand, because that's when you see the true beauty of it all. Thank you so much.
Welcome. Thank you for your gracious hospitality.
Thank you.
And so forth. Ricardo, she gave you some additional information, you know, about the piano piano teacher that you will incorporate.
We can make, we can make sure the additional information is added into the forum before it's recorded.
Okay, that is great. We just want more additional shows to communicate. Okay, Madam Secretary, have we received any written communications?
We have not.
Okay. The public hearing is now open, if anyone in the audience wants to speak on this application. None, so the public hearing is closed. I'm going to bring it back to the Commissioners. Commissioners, if anyone wishes to speak or make a motion.
I just have a brief comment, and this is really directed to our new owners on Heliotrope, Randy and Maria. That's a diadart pine that you planted in your front yard, that's in their front yard, so that's what you have to look forward to. And I hope you never cut down that tree.
The pine tree is that it's, the bark beetle does not like that tree, so it's not gonna get, it's not gonna be one of those trees that's targeted and died, so that's why ours survived all this time.
I'll make a motion if you're ready for that, Madam Chair. Okay, I'd like to adopt a, recommend to adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission Application Number 2017-65 and approving Historic Register Categorization Number 2017-64, and recommend that the City Council authorize the City Manager and Clerk of the Council to execute a Historic Property Preservation Agreement Number 2017-67 with Mark and Philip Delgado and Marilyn Delgado, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the City Manager and City Attorney.
Is there a second? Okay, move by Commissioner Harvey, move second by Commissioner Chapin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None?
And I must.
And one extension is round, Commissioner Rush. Okay, motion passed by with one extension and two absences with Commissioner Nguyen and Tara. Congratulations. Okay, we will now move on to administrative matters, which is item number five, nomination of two Historic Resource Commissioners. He participated in 2018 San Ana Historic Preservation Award at HOC Committee. Staff will now make the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item before use a request to nominate two Historic Resource Commissioners to the 2018 Historic Preservation Awards Ad Hoc Committee. The San Ana Historic Preservation Awards Program was administered from 2003 to 2009. The program served to recognize outstanding historic rehabilitation and restoration projects and also to note or highlight works that furthered the cause of historic preservation in the city. To continue to highlight these efforts, we are going to be reinstating the awards program, and we're going to be starting with a, an email or a newsletter that's going to be sent out May 31st, so next week, and we're going to be working with historic preservation groups and also neighborhood associations to get the word out and try to garner as many applications as possible. The program is going to be based on the previous model, and there are going to be five categories, five categories before your restoration, rehabilitation, merit, beautification, infill design, and the exhibits that are attached to the reports before you include detailed information and definitions of what each category is. So again, the press release is going to be sent out the 31st next week, including information on how to apply, what types of projects are going to qualify, and the review of the applications that we receive are going to be conducted by an ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee is going to, or is proposed to be comprised of two Historic Resource Commissioners and one design professional that's going to be selected by staff. Once we get all the applications together, we're looking at reviewing all the applications at a date to be determined in August. Depending on the number of applications that we received, it may be two meetings that we'd have to take to review all the applications. Once the award recipients are selected, the ad hoc committee is then going to present to the Historic Resource Commission for your approval of the award recipients. Again, ad hoc committee, two resource commissioners, one design professional, so what the request is tonight is for two resource, two Historic Resources Commissioners to participate in the ad hoc committee. Based on that, we are requesting that you nominate two Commissioners to participate in the ad hoc committee. I can answer any questions that you may have. Thanks.
Okay, does the Commissioners have any comments or?
I just have a question. Perhaps, I don't see it in here, maybe you could send us so that we know who has received these awards from 2003 to 2009, so we don't duplicate.
The criteria to be nominated are that the projects be completed in the last five years.
Right, I know, but, but what we don't want to do is, I don't think, is we want to recognize preferably something that didn't get recognized, you know, maybe somebody's redone something of some beautification which was recognized in 2003. That was 15 years ago. It could have been re-beautified, I mean, that could happen, just a thought.
Commissioner Rush, we can certainly provide a list of those that were approved over the course of the awards. Happy to do so.
Any other comments from the Commissioners? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, have we received any written communication from the Secretariat?
We have not.
Okay, is there a member of the public that would like to speak on this item? If not, wish that sent it back to the Commissioners for nomination of two Commissioners. May I take the privilege of suggesting two Commissioners? Um, may I take the privilege of suggesting to, uh, the commission? I think that number one, one of the commissioners should be Commissioner Rush. He's the one that officially signed the forward, uh, and, uh, and, you know, really did some research on this. And the other one, I would like to, um, recommend or suggest Commissioner Hardy, who's been with the, um, uh, Henninger Park. She's been in that community, and that's a historic, um, home in that area. So, we have, you know, um, that area, like, representation, he knows that area as well on the east side, and that would be, um, both of them would be a valuable asset for this commission, um, and to be on that ad hoc, um, commission.
Do you set a nomination?
Yes. I.
I would second that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of Commissioner Rush and Commissioner Hardy to be the two, uh, Historic Resource Commissioners on the Historic Preservation Award at HOC Committee, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, uh, six, uh, votes, four and two, um, absences of Commissioner Win and Commissioner Carter. Congratulations.
Hard fought battle.
Okay. I would like to go back. Uh, we did not hear from Commissioner Carter when we were giving him time to, to the meeting, but apparently, um, he's not gonna make it. So, I would like to entertain a motion to excuse his absence.
Someone?
Move by Commissioner Rush. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, is there a, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, uh, six, uh, votes, two absences of Commissioner Win and Carter. Now, uh, we move on to staff member comments. And first of all, we'd like to recognize our new planning director.
Executive Director. Uh, let me go ahead and introduce Min Thai, who's our new Planning and Building Agency Executive Director.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Madam Chair, for, um, that honor. Um, I look.
How long have you been doing so far?
Doing great. Doing great. And, um, just a little bit about me professionally. I've been, uh, involved with, uh, public agencies and, uh, private organizations dealing with both community development and economic, uh, for over twenty-five years. And, um, my, uh, recently joined the city of Santa Ana in May of early this year. I look forward to working with the commission, uh, to celebrate our history and preserve our heritage. So, um, in, in, in that goal in mind, I'd like to respectfully request, um, a workshop, work study with the commission on a date that we can schedule and coordinate with, uh, the commission. A little bit more of a, um, intimate setting, rather than being in the council chambers, we can work in one of our meeting rooms where we can sit down, and I can learn more about the commission's role and responsibilities. Um, but also, you know, to also maybe go over some brown act areas with our City Attorney's Office as well. And, um, I, I would like to also, um, take the opportunity to formally respond back to the issue of the twenty-five, twenty-five main resolution, uh, during that work study session. So, um, our staff would be calling each commission to, um, ascertain your date availability for that, uh, work study session. So, I look forward to doing that with you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, go ahead.
So, um, so we'll, uh, coordinate that as, um, as, um, as Min has described it. In addition to that, we'd like to bring up a couple of, uh, of, of things that are going on to, to keep, uh, commission abreast. So, in Washington Square, as you might know, there was a historic home that was built, uh, burnt, uh, destroyed at one thousand and two West Washington. We'd just like to, uh, keep you informed that May fifteenth, uh, just recently, permits were issued to rebuild the structure on the site, and it will be, uh, very similar to what was there previously in regard to footprint, architecture, scale, and massing. So, we're happy to, to, uh, be able to share that progress. In Henninger Park, uh, seven-one-eight South Broadway, which has had some challenges, um, uh, they have actually, um, obtained their permits on May third of this year. So, uh, the proposal includes repair of existing windows, installation of new windows, of course, to match the original, and a number of other improvements. Um, so, we're pleased to say that that's moving forward in Henninger Park. In addition, uh, there's been some questions in the past about six-twenty-five South Cypress Sealed Firehouse over on East Side area. And we, we're trying to work closely with Parks and Recreation. Um, they have completely cleaned out the interior of that building, which was quite the challenge. And, um, at this point, it's barricaded, if you will, with steel doors, and, um, there is an alarm system on the property presently. So, uh, Parks and Rec is in conversation about, uh, making it habitable only for storage of historic documents, so not open to the public. And, uh, we're, we're working closely with them to make sure those steel barricades, if you will, particularly on the front elevation, evolve to something historically appropriate. And they're also looking at some fencing in the front yard that we also want to make sure that everything's historically appropriate. So, we'll keep you informed on that. Uh, another.
I'm sorry.
Certainly.
So, Parks and Recreation, are they monitoring that until all of this is done? And it seems like, um, they're not, they're not protecting the ability coming off. They promised that they were going to, you know, have much more, uh, secure, uh, security, um, and then also monitoring to make sure that the home is not working into that.
In talking to Ron Ono earlier in the week, it seems as though it's under control from my talking to him. As I mentioned, they have installed a, um, security system, which was not there before. The barricades have been up there for a while, but I can double back with Ron, but my understa- my understanding is that there's, uh, hasn't been any recent issues.
Okay. We just want to make sure that, um, you know, it's getting, it's been cold, and they do have a tendency that they're gonna start fires. And with the building as important to our historical, um, preservation, we don't want the building to go up in flames.
Absolutely. But if you've been by the property, they, they have metal-secured, uh, shields, if you will, on all the openings. So, it, it would be quite a challenge for anyone to get in at this point. But there clearly were lots of homeless folks in there before, and there was a lot of trash and debris and such. So, they cleared all that out, and, um, uh, we'll keep you abreast on things, and we'll...
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, one other update item would be, um, as you know, we had seventy or so applications for listing and or Mills Act, and, um, we're down to seventeen. Of those seventeen, all of them have been reviewed for eligibility. So, we're now in the process of about a dozen of them are, at this moment, considered not eligible, either for architectural reasons or because they have outstanding code violations. Could be an addition that was done without permits of that nature. So, we are preparing to notify each of those, uh, individuals in a formal letter and communicate what needs to be, uh, addressed, and do that in the next, uh, ten days or so, so that they have, uh, and they'll have a deadline that if they can get some things modified by, I think our date is August, in August, then, uh, that we could queue them up for a commission hearing before the end of the year. But we're gonna be giving them a timeline to remedy this, whatever is historically inappropriate or additions or code violations. Um, and if they cannot do it in that timeframe, then their application would need to roll over till next year. So, we're trying to, um, you know, put some, um, a frame around, um, what needs to be done in certain timeframes. So, our goal would be, um, that, um, we'll talk about meeting dates, I, I think, in a minute or two, but, um, our next meeting date would be August, the first Thursday in August, which is August second. And that will give a little time for us to coordinate with these outstanding property owners and such, and then come back to you in August with, um, another few properties that are, are ready. And then, uh, we are proposing as well that October, November, we would meet, and then that would be the last batch of any, um, properties to be listed and put on Mills Act for this year, which would get time for it to go, them to go to council and be recorded before the end of the year. So, any questions on that?
I have one question. What is the total number of applicants we have this year today?
Uh, from when we got the whole huge batch that was deadlined in Au- August, seventy-one.
No, I mean, from January first to today.
I would say it's two, and, um, and one of them actually, we're kind of courtesy, trying to give them feedback on if they're eligible, but I think maybe one that actually paid a fee with these, once, once the fees went up.
One of the things I think that's still is deterring Historic Preservation of the City is the huge increase in fees. Uh, Mr. Chad, you may not be aware of this, but last year, the fees were in the mid-two-thousand for both the Historic Registry and the Mills Act, and now just shy of ten thousand dollars. And so, we've gone from fifteen on average, back to now two. Just to make a.
Thank you. If I may add on a comment to my, uh, request for the work study session for the public's purpose, uh, it will be a public meeting, so the public is welcome. And, um, you, you know, if you're interested, we can let you know what that date is. So, I want to make sure that the public understands that.
Thank you.
And then, just two more quick points. As it relates to fees, I, I wanted to make mention that as of July first, our, all of our fees in the city will go up just as very small percentages as they do every year. Uh, we are continuing our, um, our fee study analysis, and we anticipate that in October is when we would go forward to council with the results of the fee study for a variety of fees, including the historic fees. So, as is mentioned before, Santa Ana does, of the, of the few that we've sampled, um, Santa Ana has the highest fee, but our philosophy is cost recovery. So, the main thing is, it's a philosophy of the, of the community on subsidizing the effort that it takes, um, or not. But, um, October is when, uh, whatever fees would be changed or anticipated to go to council. And then, last but not least, we have at long last updated our website. So, it does have the latest, well, it has a historic, uh, listing and a coinciding, um, map that can be accessed, and it, it takes all the properties through, um, March, March. Um, and it's organized just a little bit better to be a little more user-friendly and help those that are on the, um, his- or historic properties, uh, to find out how to apply for additions and find out more information. It's a work in progress, but if you go to the link for Santa Ana Historic Preservation, um, you'll, you'll see some improvements. And we're always open to suggestions. So, on that note, I think that summarizes staff's comments.
Thank you. Now, we will have, uh, commission comments, um, starting with, um, Commissioner.
Well, I'll thank, uh, Mr. Rush and Professor Hardy for sending forward that I will be to take this important, uh, subcommittee work. And, uh, I usually, uh, I usually am very impressed with the properties, uh, that we have, but particularly what they constructed today is the, the great interest that all of the property owners have in the history of their property in terms of the, the structure itself, but also in terms of, uh, the, uh, human, uh, residents and, uh, so, this is quite a, uh, quite a remarkable and, and very encouraging, uh, thing to, to see, and very, very heartening. Thanks, thanks to all of you.
Commissioner Rush?
Um, thank you. I too want to congratulate all the, all the property owners for your new designation, and, uh, congratulations for all your hard work and, and efforts and, uh, in pursuing historic designation. So, as we march forward in the city and try to get as many properties that qualify as, as possible onto the registry, I, I think back so many years ago when, uh, we were fought tooth and nail by the city, um, to not have more than a hundred people on the list, and Diane Marsh and I, um, uh, were, uh, wrestling with, um, then the planning staff who was, uh, shall we say, resistant to, uh, to creating a historic list. But I think we all recognize how it, how it will benefit the city. Um, certainly, thank you to my fellow members of the commission for, uh, nominating me and Janelle to serve, uh, on the selection committee for the Preservation Awards, and I'm, I'm delighted that we're gonna move forward with that and, uh, give those property owners the due recognition, um, they should have. Um, I have, of course, as many of you have beaten the drum over the last, uh, many months about this issue of the fees, and I know staff is working on it. Um, I had, um, lunch yesterday with, um, our new executive director, and shared with him my tremendous frustration over that issue. And, uh, I have no doubt that we have the distinction of having the highest fees in the state, no doubt. We're highest in the state, not just in the county, not just in Southern California, but in the entire state. We could have the distinction of having the highest fees amongst the, if not the highest to highest fees in the entire country. And I said, "It is ridiculous that, um, somehow other cities can find a way to do it for a hell of a lot less than Santa Ana." There's no excuse for that. Now, granted, may, there's gotta be different ways to skin the, skin the cat. Um, maybe we allow the homeowner to do, we farm out some of the work to them, we have a workshop and say, you know, "Here's, here's what you do." We have, uh, a staff member who reviews them and says, kicks them out and says, "Nope, that's not good enough. You're gonna have to redo it," et cetera. But there's gotta be a way to bring down the fees. Ten thousand dollars to get your home on Historic Register is absolutely, um, it's just unconscionable. So, we, we, we should be thinking about that at every meeting, because guess what? With one, with one application this year, why, in just a few months, we're gonna have nothing to talk about. No reason to have Historical Resources Commission. We won't have anything to discuss. And yet, here we are, the city in the county with the largest number of historic assets by far. Um, so, I just think that's, uh, deplorable. Anyway, on that happy note, um, uh, let's look forward to lots of nominations for awards. And, um, uh, by the way, I passed out to each of you commissioners and the staff, um, little packet, um, stuff from Preserve Orange County, which is the new countywide preservation organization, which I serve on the board of. Uh, in case you're wondering what that is, well, there's a brochure, there's a coaster to put your coffee cup on, and there is a, some, um, stack of Post-it notepads for you to use. Now, if you become a member, you get a leather coaster, a, a, a custom-designed leather coaster, so, um, uh, that you will pass down to your grandchildren. So, that's all I have.
Commissioner.
First of all, I want to congratulate all the homeowners, and thank you for coming. Wonderful to hear your stories and your passion that I see that you have in your house. Thank you. Also, want to thank the staff, their hard work, uh, and everything they've done for us, uh, including updating the plaque with a historical designation. Thank you very much. And I also want to, um, thank Commissioner Rush and Hardy for, uh, working on this, um, ad hoc committee. That's, that's gonna be, uh, really good for the city and for historic preservation. And to wrap it up, there is a publication that I get, and I don't know why I keep forgetting to bring it, but tonight I did, uh, The Old Town Orange Plaza Review. And it's a free publication that if you go downtown, you get, pick it up, uh, or you can maybe contact them at W W W dot orange review dot com. Reason I bring it up here is because, just like this couple right here, they always feature a historic home in every issue, and they go through the entire thing about the history of it, the family that lives there, and it's just, the spread is just beautiful with gorgeous pictures. So, that's the favorite thing I look forward to getting in the mail. Thank you very much.
Well, first of all, congratulations to all the homeowners.
Well, first of all, congratulations to all the homeowners in the room and thank you for bringing your homes forward and loving your homes and loving where you live in Santa Ana. And also I'd like to thank Ivan, Pedro, Manuel and Ricardo, all for doing their part tonight and getting a chance, I guess, to show off in front of the new director, executive director, and welcome to men who's left the room. So I do have a question, a couple of questions for Melanie. You said there's seventeen homes left, but then twelve were ineligible, so does that mean we only have five?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Right. So I'm sure there will be a couple of the homes that'll choose to adjust what's code violations.
Or some minor violations, I'm sure they will.
Right. And then there will be some that maybe choose not to, so we'll see in August, we'll give you an update in August.
And then another question is the Old Pacific Symphony Hall. Can you give us a quick update, what's happening? It's been boarded up for years and it's such a beautiful building.
Yes, well, we actually met with the, what I believe is the current owner of the building and it's an architect and they've actually had the building for a couple of years and they are trying to get it occupied and do some improvements and they seem to be, you know, the building's been vacant for more than a year, so from a city code standpoint, it has to go through variances and approvals and they're, they're really trying to work through handling that process and getting a new person in the building. So it's, it's kind of been going around in circles and the right opportunity, the right tenant hasn't come up to maybe have it, to help it pencil out and move forward in a positive fashion.
It's a beautiful property inside, if you ever have ever been in it and so I just, the times I've been down there, I've seen homeless people, I too am worried about fires and damage and some of the stained glass windows have been broken out and so it's...
They've had some recent, recent, recent issues with the homeless and so they're, they're concerned to get something positive in there as well. You know, it's quite an undertaking, it's not like the YMCA building, but it's, it's a big undertaking.
It's a big project.
And they're still having challenges to get to the next step.
Phil, if I may share with you, I met with them too and gosh, it's been, oh goodness, it's gotta be.
Almost three years.
It's, it's a good couple of years since I met with them, I met with them several times and referred them to a contractor and there's several hundred thousand dollars worth of work. And the roof needs substantial work, but if something isn't done soon, that building is gonna be at real severe risk because of the leaking and so forth. And the homeless have been in there, they've had a horrific problem with keeping the homeless out of there. I mean, it's just remarkable. And so many of those beautiful stained glass windows are, I mean, there's, you know, another one a week lost, it's really sad. And I don't know, I wonder if it wouldn't make sense to offer to have the city, you know, maybe take those windows out and store them or something because, and the homeless just break in there on a weekly basis and that, that building is gonna, if that survives a fire in the next three or four years before it's reoccupied. And of course, the biggest problem with the building is there's no parking. You know, there's parking there for about nine cars and the parking that is behind the buildings to the south of it, which would front on Main, so be between Bush and, and Main, I think those lots are largely controlled by First American. And First American seems unwilling, you know, they sit there vacant all day and they seem unwilling, it's too bad Men isn't here, but somebody ought to intervene there because it's just, that is, you've got these buildings which nobody can do anything with because there's no parking. Who's gonna rent that building when there's no parking? It's ridiculous.
Well, one of the things we talked to them about is that, you know, Santa Ana downtown is an urban setting and for some of us that work in the downtown, you start to evolve and get used to walking a few blocks for parking. So it's not unimaginable that they might have to walk to a local parking structure to go to a venue there. So we're trying to work on that capacity, but I, I think that we will double back with, I don't know, whatever funding sources might be out there to see what we can, can do, you know. Otherwise, you're right, this resource might slip through, through our hands and even getting it boarded up properly or something to preserve what's left of those windows.
I'm a bit concerned that you did say, since it's been over a year now, they have extra hoops to jump through. And I would like to see us be more friendly to people that want to preserve a building like that and, and maybe work with the applicant to make that path as easy as possible without compromising, of course, the structural value. But that is an amazing structure that we have, I believe it is on the registry.
Absolutely.
And so I would like us to really work with that new owner any way we possibly can to see something positive done there. I think that'd be good. On the, do you have something else about that issue?
The funny, well, it's not funny, it's kind of, it's almost remarkable. The couple that bought it, husband and wife, they're both architects. They bought it at a tax sale, sight unseen. The lady told me that and I said, really? Took my breath away, I said, wow, that's a clutch my pearls moment. I'm like, you've gotta be kidding me. She was so taken with downtown Santa Ana and she was going on in these romantic terms and I said, wow, huh, Chamber of Commerce needs to hook up with you, honey. But, wow, yeah, sight unseen, bought it at a tax sale.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, just a couple other things, I'm almost done. I'd like to congratulate Commissioners Hardy and Rush on stepping up to work with our award program. Thank you staff for bringing that back, listening to us about that. And also the same with the plaque, thank you for getting that corrected version out for homeowners to use. And I too want to echo about the fees are exorbitantly high and inappropriate and it's clear with only one application versus a hundred last year, what the incentive or the disincentive of the fees is doing. We are far from having all the properties that should be preserved on our registry and this is just a huge deterrent, I think. As I sell properties in Santa Ana, many people are interested in getting on the registry, getting the milzak, but the minute I say it's ten thousand dollars and now I guess it's gonna go up July 1st even more, that just, people just shake their head. So maybe we'll find one or two rich people on Victoria Drive that would be willing to pay that, but I think the rest of the city, that's just way too much money. And that's all I have, thank you.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate all the homeowners for accomplishing their historic And I'd like to thank the commissioners for your nomination to participate in the Historic Preservation Awards Ad-Hoc Committee. And thank Commissioner Rush for pushing to bring our awards program back that some of us have even forgotten about, I'm guessing. The other thing is 625 South Cypress, Cypress Fire Station. Melanie, can we produce a checklist? I mean, they're proposing to use the building as storage, but do they have a vision? First of all, they need to come up with a rehabilitation plan for the facade. This is a building that's listed, it's a landmark, I believe, and the facade needs to be rehabilitated according to Secretary of Interior Standards and Park and Rec or the property owner, they need to know that this is expected and they may need guidance from planning exactly how to do this. There are still significant architectural features on that facade that I continue to be worried about and I'm not sure they've even been identified, although I have been told that when the building was designated, that there were photos taken. But yet I have inquired about another property that was designated and those architectural features were not documented at the time of designation. So we need to check on that. And if you want me to send you pictures or identify those architectural features that I believe are maybe in danger still, I can do that. The other thing is that part of the reason why that facade needs to be rehabilitated is it's part of the view corridor requirement. And that view corridor needs to include the facade that's been rehabilitated, otherwise what the heck are we looking at? There are other cities that have listed historic buildings that are vacant or empty or maybe even the front part of them isn't being used, but yet they are, they've been rehabilitated and they're, you know, there's something to look at there and you can tell that somebody cares. The other thing is if they, when they rehabilitate the facade, if there's a need for continued security, let's, can we look at developing some sort of security at the windows, inside the windows that... And then there's one last thing, I go by there a couple times a week just because I'm going downtown and there's graffiti on one of the panels at the front of the building on the left and it's really large, so maybe we can look into getting that removed. Thank you.
Can I add one thing just to that particular building is, I had heard that the history room from the library was gonna relocate there, is that not happening now?
What Ron O'Noe shared is that it's just for storage, overflow storage from the history room. And at, at this point in time, it's not, wouldn't be, it would not be open to the public, it would just be for staff to come and gather, gather things. And we, we are trying to educate Parks and Rec about the criticalness about the exterior, but I'll make sure that we follow up with an email to Gerardo and Ron, give them some links to Secretary of Interior Standards and give them the old background to reinforce that they need to come through the historic review process and restore and rehab and have a plan for, as you say, putting something inside the windows versus outside so it doesn't look like an armory. And, and then ask them to what their funding program is and, you know, because the funding is one of their inhibitors. So we'll come back at some point and give you a little, a little bit more of a program on what they have in mind and how they're gonna fund it.
Thank you. And then can you educate them also on those architecture elements that are still on the building that, that we don't want to see disappear and then have Park and Rec say, well, what were you talking about? That was nothing, you know?
Right. Well, at minimum, we can make sure that we, we did go out with Parks and Rec several months back and we can make sure that we have photographs that document the exterior detailing sufficiently.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I just want to thank, all the homeowners, thank you so much for being so gracious of meeting with us on Sunday and inviting us into your homes and talking about your homes. That was so gracious of you to do that and take your time and we enjoyed the stories and a bit of information and like I said, what you bring and you speak about your property, we're now adding that to our historic information background and so it just keeps getting more and more with us. So once again, congratulations for preserving your home, putting it on our register, we really appreciate that. Once again, adding on the theme, okay, you now have South Seventeenth Street, like Washington Square, Wilshire Square, Sandpoint, even my neighborhood association, Valley Adams, and then on the west side, homes that are now over fifteen years old that could qualify, you know, or almost during that time, or even key people that were prominent here in Santa Ana. But once again, you're now coming into middle class, what they can afford ten thousand dollars. Is that fair? That's not fair for becoming hires, you know, to have only, you know, ten houses for only a certain area or making it prohibitive when the rest of us cannot even for our homes if it, you know, are historical periods at times, just one of our time period, if it is fifteen years or older, you can, you know, if it's a particular style, a particular person living there, you can, and as long as it meets our criteria to be placed on our register, once again, cost prohibitive, cost prohibitive. And I'm just going for fairness and that has to be hit again. I'm a, my council member, I, like I said, I'm sending, you know, pointing out, you know, you live in your district, you're shutting us out with these things and I think everyone else should be getting a thousand, or a million, you know? Look at those homes, those shooter homes that are in, or ratchet or, or yard and homes, South Seventeenth that are going here. And once again, you know, we want to preserve that object and the history of our city, but let's be fair, let's make it inclusive for everyone to be able to afford their, their homes on, on record. Congratulations to them and Janelle. Like I said, my comments and the nomination, you're gonna do a fabulous job on this preservation of the world. I don't want to do this, it's not our goal, we deserve, we deserve that. Okay? And welcome to them. Let it know.
We will, he had to go to another community meeting, so he apologizes.
That's why I put that. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting to our next meeting, which is in office second, office second. Oh, that's right, the work study session to be...
Determined.
...for the office meeting. And with that, there are those two in here.
So moved.
Move flag, Commissioner Rush, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rush. All those who think it's an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed, six, two, three, four, and I'm passed. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.